I'd like to call the March tenth, two thousand and sixteen, meeting of Williamsburg City Council to order. Ms. Walton, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newton?
Here.
Mr. Pons?
Here.
Mayor Holman?
Here.
Vice Mayor Freiling?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
First order of business today are council minutes for the meetings of February eighth and February eleventh, two thousand and sixteen. Do I have any additions or corrections?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that council approve the minutes for the February eighth and February eleventh, two thousand and sixteen, meetings as submitted. Second?
I have a motion, a second. Jerry, call the roll, please.
Ms. Newton?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
We have no matters of special privilege today, no public hearings. That brings us to the next agenda item, reports. The first of those is the monthly financial statement. Mr. Collins, anything in particular to point out?
Yeah, I think there's a, at this point, a one-month trend of note with the tourism revenues tracking down for January. Those are actual experience in January. And the finance director and I reviewed that and talked, and there were two events that we felt drove numbers into a negative compared to previous year. There might be three things. One is if you look back over a five-year period, it's still a linear progression, so this might be close to where, in a normal economy, so last year's had a unusual spike in January. This January, Colonial Williamsburg reduced operations in January, which impacted, would have impacted those numbers a little bit. If you think when our two inclement weather events happened, they happened on weekends and in a drive market during the school year, to have your weekends impacted by inclement weather can also impact those revenue streams. So we're going to continue to watch that and track that, but wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you, thank you. Any questions? If not, monthly department operating reports, anything in particular?
Staff and I are here if you have any questions on that.
Any questions?
Just an observation, and I don't expect an answer if you don't have it right away, but I noticed that the street sweeping tonnage is way down, or the linear miles, however, can't pull it up right at the moment, is way down. Is there...
Street sweeper was out on repair for a large portion of the month, so you noticed the sand stayed around a little bit after the weather event.
But it seems like it's been a continual trend. So I guess it's been out of operation for a while.
That particular piece of equipment's probably our heaviest vehicle maintenance issue.
Where are we in terms of the life cycle of that particular piece of equipment, and what can we expect?
Defer to the public works director.
That will be, excuse me, that will be replaced next year, July twenty-seventeen. It's already been figured in. We're looking at different things now.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Just out of curiosity, Mr. Clayton, do you have an idea yet of the approximate cost of replacement?
Between one hundred and twenty-five and one hundred and seventy-five thousand, that range.
That piece of equipment is particularly important for us because it, by sweeping the streets, it creates big benefits for our meeting, the daily minimum requirements for the Chesapeake Bay Act, and that's a big plus for us there. So it's probably money well spent, given what we could spend there versus what we would spend on the, you know, overflow sewer system repairs and additions is probably money well spent.
Yes, huge dividends.
Yeah, aesthetically alone, but all the other benefits.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, not only does it make it look good, but it has other benefits as well. Okay, any other questions on operating reports? That brings us to city manager reports. We have three today. The first is the Williamsburg Regional Library, their two thousand and seventeen budget presentation. Have library staff here, but we also have two of our city representatives to the board, Jim Axtell and Vicky Herrick. So thank you for being here, and I'll turn it to Mr. Collins.
And I will turn it over to Genevieve Owen with the library, the director of the library, to give her a presentation.
Genevieve, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'd like to begin this afternoon by just taking a moment to go two years back in time to March of two thousand and fourteen, when I was a brand-new director of Williamsburg Regional Library, and I was making a budget presentation to you in the Stryker Building. And here we are in two thousand and sixteen, with me making a budget presentation in this magnificent new Stryker Center. And what a difference two years makes. You've already acknowledged the presence of Jim Axtell and Vicky Herrick, two members of our Library Board of Trustees who are here. I also want to be sure to introduce George Rivas, who is here. He represents James City County on our Williamsburg Regional Library Board of Trustees. And I also want to acknowledge the presence of Carrie Binsfeld, our Finance and General Services Director, because she is the financial brains behind the budget, the proposed budget for the Williamsburg Regional Library. So, but before I begin to dive into the numbers, what I'd like to do is to just highlight a few things here from fiscal year two thousand and sixteen that the library has accomplished. The first being an update of our strategic plan. We had a strategic plan that ran from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and fifteen, and so we've spent the last nine months developing a strategic plan for two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and eighteen. And that work was very much of a refresh of a strategic plan rather than a rewrite of a strategic plan. We've been operating under a strategic plan framework since two thousand and two, so we weren't starting from scratch. But we were trying to bring the plan up to date with all the developments in the community, all of the developments in the library world, and, as I say, really refresh it. And we worked with a consulting firm, Burke Consulting, out of Seattle, Washington, whom I was familiar with through my work with the American Library Association, and came up not only with a refreshed strategic plan, but also an accompanying financial framework that really helps us lay out all of the different financial paths we might take to accomplish library goals, and to establish the reasons why we would follow one particular path over another. And I think it's been already instrumental for me in thinking through a variety of financial situations that we face as an institution, and deciding whether we're going to use public money for things, or whether we're going to use private money for things. We also updated our mission and vision statements in the course of doing that work. Again, they are essentially the same as they were before, but they have better language. I'm particularly pleased with the mission statement, which I referred to in my comments on Monday, where the Williamsburg Regional Library's mission is to inform, enrich, and strengthen our community. It's important for you to know that during fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, the use of our digital materials has continued to accelerate, so users are downloading eBooks and audiobooks and music and electronic magazines for their iPads, and so that use is up twenty-two percent over last year. Obviously, we worked very closely, and continue to work closely, with city staff and with the architects on the Stryker Center, and that has been a very enjoyable process, particularly with the architects. We very much enjoyed working with Ed Pease and David Steeman. And then, we've been in a partnership agreement with the Williamsburg James City County Schools for over a decade now, and as part of that, we sponsor, with our Friends of Williamsburg Regional Library, we sponsor book fairs for the summer school students in the public schools, where each child who participates is allowed to pick out two brand-new books for him or herself to keep, and that's always very well received by both the teachers and the students in the summer school program. All right, so let's dive into some numbers now. I want to start on the proposed expenditure side of the House and review the three lines that you see on your screen. First, the compensation line was prepared with guidance from James City County, because all Williamsburg Regional Library staff members are governed by the James City County Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual, with the exception of the director, who serves at the pleasure of the Board of Trustees. And we expect that number will be, continue to be refined and developed as James City County finalizes its budget. The collections line that you see includes a ten thousand dollar increase, which we would apply to the purchase of multiple copies of very popular titles. During the Great Recession, we relied very heavily on our Friends of Williamsburg Regional Library to provide funds for the purchase of multiple copies, and now, as we're recovering from the recession, we're trying to rebuild some of that money into our regular collections budget. And then finally, the operations line reflects the greatest percentage increase overall in our proposed budget, and it reflects both some increased costs that we're having to manage, as well as some particular things that we laid out in our strategic plan. Certainly, the contractual services line, we've increased by twenty-six thousand dollars. That reflects a new contract that we have for copier, printer, scanner machines, and we are in a three-year arrangement for those machines. It also reflects the fact that we will be entering into a new contract for HVAC maintenance with DeMuth as our contract is coming to a close, and because we have some aging equipment, we expect that that contract may be a little bit more expensive than it's been in the past, although we will continue to work on capital improvement requests that help keep that equipment up to date and therefore less expensive to maintain. And then on the strategic plan side of the House, we've increased our advertising expenditure line by seventy-five hundred dollars, because communicating and raising awareness about the library is one of our strategic priorities for the next three years, and we know that doing some of that work requires increased funding for advertising. And then finally, on the strategic plan side, we've increased our library programs line by eleven thousand dollars, because again, programming is going to be an area of focus for us over the next three years, particularly as we've brought the Stryker Center online with exhibits and associated programming. That programming line is also one that we raided during the course of the Great Recession in order to balance our budgets, so again, we're trying to rebuild from that point. Looking now at our proposed budget revenues, certainly for the three localities, the requests were developed using the Contract for Library Services amongst the City of Williamsburg, James City County, and York County. And as you may recall, that contract contains a funding formula based on the circulation of library materials amongst residents of the three jurisdictions. So again, using that formula, we've arrived at a two-point, two-point-zero-three percent requested increase from the City of Williamsburg, a two-point-five percent increase, five-six percent increase from James City County. And then on the York County side, we're actually proposing a decrease in their funding due to a significant decrease in the circulation of library materials to York County residents. Their circulation of library materials dropped by almost a half a percentage point, actually more than a half a percentage point, last fiscal year. And when you start applying a half a percentage point to a very large budget, the numbers come up the way they have come up on your screens. Looking on to state aid to public libraries, right now, we're projecting that state aid will hold flat from one year to the next. There's a slight variation just based on the funding formula that the state of Virginia uses. I am cautiously optimistic about state aid, however, because the Senate budget that just passed contained an increase in state aid to public libraries of two million dollars, one million dollar during each of the years that are budgeted. And I have to compliment Senator Norman for his leadership in this area. He's really been a champion of state aid to public libraries, and so I know he is busy with his colleagues, making the sausage that is the Virginia budget as we speak. On the generated side of the House, we're looking at a slight decrease in the revenues that Williamsburg Regional Library generates for itself. Our lost book line is down by about a thousand dollars, I think, increasingly as people are checking out electronic things, there are less physical things for them to lose, so our lost book revenue is down. Our library fine line is going to, is being down by a full seven thousand dollars for fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, and again, that's a reflection, I really think, of two things. First, the fact that electronic titles self-destruct on your device once they are due, so we don't have the opportunity to collect overdue fines on electronic materials. The other thing is that we do an exceptionally good job of reminding users about when their library books are due. We can send those reminders via not only email now, but text messages as well. So sometimes I think that maybe we do too good a job in reminding our users about those due dates. And then again, on the generated revenue side, we are projecting an increase of five thousand dollars in the collection of meeting room fees, and that again is a result of the Stryker Center coming online, and what we are beginning to anticipate in terms of the use of these wonderful, wonderful meeting rooms. And then I want to conclude by noting that we are very aware of the outstanding support that we receive from our local governments, as well as our residents for the Williamsburg Regional Library, and we very much want to continue to honor that support with excellent collections programs, services, and facilities for all the residents of greater Williamsburg. And with that, I'd be delighted to take any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Jen, and again, thank you to your board members that are here and other staff members. Thank you for being here. Let me turn to council for any questions, discussions, comments?
Sure, I have a comment and maybe a couple of questions. You know, we have some terrific regional partnerships in this area, certainly with James City County and, to a lesser degree, York County, but we still work together with them very closely on police, fire, EMS, mutual aid, the courthouse, regional jail, the Greater Williamsburg Partnership, certainly our school system, and these are all important in their own way, just as is the library, because there's simply no doubt in my mind that these efforts would not be nearly as effective, valued, or successful if we weren't all working together as a community to provide these services to our residents. So I just want to constantly remind us of that and be thankful that we have that partnership, because without it, we wouldn't be able to do as much as we are able to do with any of them, and that applies to the library, too. So I'm just curious, Ms. Owens, what do you attribute the drop in circulation to York County residents? Is that a hard-number decrease or a relative percentage decrease?
It's both. And I honestly don't have a solid answer to give you, and it puzzles me as well. I'm not entirely certain. It's possible that York County users might be doing more with electronic circulation, and electronic circulation, unfortunately, we cannot track by the borrower's jurisdiction at this time. We are something of an anomaly in the way we fund our library based on those circulation percentages, and therefore, the vendors that we have to rely on for those electronic titles aren't able to parse out the data the way we're able to parse out the data on the circulation of hard copy materials. So that may be in the mix as well.
And if that's the case, that's fine, there's not much you can do about it. Just, I certainly hope it, it's in no way a reflection of any perception of lack of service, or somehow the library's become less appealing to the residents of Upper York County.
I hope not.
But I can't imagine it is. Can you talk a little bit about the impact of the opening of the Stryker Center on your staffing for the next fiscal year?
The Stryker Center, in order to mirror the library hours, which we very much want to do for all of our residents, in order to staff the Stryker Center, I had to, I needed to reclassify two vacancies that I had at the library. So I reclassified a full-time vacancy that I had, and also a part-time vacancy that I had, so that we are shifting one-point-five FTE in staffing over here to the Stryker Center to provide support for meeting room use that mirrors library hours. And the city has very graciously, is very graciously pursuing some staffing from the Parks and Rec side of the House for weekend coverage of the building, so that users can use the building during weekend hours when the library is open. And we're continuing to track and evolve in terms of what kind of staffing is really needed over here, what the demand is really going to be from the public. But certainly based on the responses that I've seen on Monday with users coming into the building and being just quite taken with it, and hopefully what we'll see this evening when there's an open house here in the building, I expect this building's going to be very desirable very quickly.
Could I inject something?
Sure.
I want to particularly point out that Brian Hill and James City County were very accommodating in this, because again, your personnel have run through them, so the needs are for, you know, the Stryker Center, but James City County, you know, essentially operates your personnel side, so they were very accommodating.
They were, and they...
And I want to thank them for that.
And those are...
And it's a measure of the partnership that we have.
Absolutely, and those are some of the swiftest reclassifications I've ever been able, been able to engineer through James City County, but...
Well, no, that's fine, and thank you for mentioning it. I just think it's a testament to the efficiency and effectiveness of the operation of the library as a whole, that you can take on these additional responsibilities. We have the reduction in the contribution by York County, which is perfectly reasonable and fair, and yet, the city's contribution in the next year is only going up by two percent, and the county, James City County's by two and a half percent. So I think that says a lot about how well the library's run, so thank you.
Can you dive into that anticipated five thousand dollar increase in revenue from meeting room usage? Is that because of this nice space you're able to charge more, or is it extra demand?
Both.
Okay.
Our Board of Trustees just approved a fee schedule for the use of all of our meeting rooms, both at the Williamsburg Library, the James City County Library, and here in the Stryker Center. The fees here at the Stryker Center are a little bit more than what we're charging in those other buildings, because this is beautiful new space, larger space, a more technically well-equipped space. And I will tell you that there are many times over at, particularly at the Williamsburg Library, when a group very much wants to use a meeting room over there, and there is no room at the end. And I certainly experienced that myself with our staff members, and sometimes having to meet in the youth services program room to conduct a meeting, which isn't a bad thing, but it means that we can't do youth services programming in the room at that particular time. And I will freely admit that the five thousand dollars is simply an educated guess, and I, we will, time will tell how accurate that guess was.
Jen?
Thank you, Ms. Owens, for coming in and giving us a presentation. Clearly, I think we all think very highly of the Williamsburg Library. You know, it is, as the mayor's often referred to it, as the crown jewel, so to speak, and it's obviously won lots of awards around the state for providing excellent service, and so I compliment you for that, and thank you. You know, and I wondered, Ms. Vice Mayor Freiling brought up the York County issue. Are you able to ascertain how many York County folks come to this library versus the James City County, and whether or not the lack of parking during construction may have kept some folks away?
I'm not able to distinguish the residence of a particular user of the library when she comes through our doors. I honestly don't know. So I can't break it out in terms of the circula, I cannot break it out in terms of the door count. I could take a deeper dive into what York County users did at the county library versus what York County users did here at the Williamsburg Library, and certainly, parking has been a deterrent.
Sure. And don't dive any further on my behalf of that question.
If I may, though, there is a parking deck less than half a block away that has always has open spaces in it that's been available the entire construction. Parking is available within a two-block walkable distance of this facility, and sufficient numbers. I don't think that's an accurate deterrent.
And then, could you give us an update on how the renovations of the space has been made available as a result of the offices moving? Where is that, and do you have a timeline for that to be completed?
I do, but it's a bit of a broad one, because certainly during the strategic planning process, it became abundantly clear that we really need to take a step back and look at a facility's master plan, both for the Williamsburg Library and for the James City County Library. You know, the plans for the renovation of the Williamsburg Library are now almost three years old. They don't necessarily reflect the collaborative nature of development that the Board of Trustees now expects from Williamsburg Regional Library. And there are a variety of things that have presented themselves over the past three years at the Williamsburg Library in particular, that we really weren't thinking about three years ago, and one of them is really quite simple, but also makes a lot of sense, and that's the need potentially for a family restroom in that building, because you have so many families with small children, or even individuals who might need a little bit of assistance from an opposite-sex friend or partner in using a restroom. So I think we're going to take, as I say, a step back. We're not going to be knocking down any walls at the Williamsburg Library in, I wouldn't think, in the next fiscal year, but as we're looking potentially at fiscal year eighteen, that's when I think some of those changes are likely, are likely to happen.
Good, well, I think that's good to do just that, step back and reassess, rather than wish you had done something after the renovation.
Correct.
Thank you, I don't have any other questions.
Judy?
Just to follow up on what Doug said, I have actually talked to people who think that parking right there is too far to walk to get to the library. I mean, it probably should walk, but I have talked to people...
I should walk.
Yeah. But the question, Genevieve, you mentioned that during the recession, you used money that the Friends had raised to help with some of your programming. I noticed in the budget, you're budgeting the same amount from the Friends. Do you have some other ideas of how you'd like to use that money?
Oh, I always have other ideas about how to use money. You know, one of the things that the Friends allow us to do is to experiment with new technologies that become available. For example, when eBooks first came onto the market, we weren't entirely comfortable with devoting public funds to things that were so new and so uncertain. And so the Friends gave us a fifty thousand dollar grant to experiment with eBooks, and over a couple of years, it became apparent that eBooks were here to stay, that they worked well enough that the average user could download them herself. And so then, once it became apparent that this was more mainstream, we started to build those funds back into the, or into the regular collections budget. That's a process that takes some time. It's not like we want to put fifty thousand dollars' worth of new money in a budget in any, in any given year, certainly on the collections line. But they give us a wonderful opportunity to experiment. And sometimes those experiments are not successful, and it's really good to have an unsuccessful experiment be paid for with private money rather than with public money. And this is part of that financial framework document that I was referring to that complements the strategic plan, and so I've even been in situations already where we've said to ourselves, okay, so is this a core function, a core something that should be paid for with public money, or is it a margin of excellence or experimental item that we want to pay for, at least initially, with private money?
Great, thank you.
Of course.
Thank you, Jen. Couple of things. One is, this has been brought up, and I think it's important to, again, recognize the critical role that the Friends of the Library and the Library Foundation play in helping ensure that this is a top-rated library. As you well know, they play an important role, they played an important role in helping this become a reality as well.
Yes, they did.
So we appreciate that. I guess the discussion led me to a question. The formula that we use for funding is driven by circulation, but as, with a twenty-two percent increase in electronic, and that's grown dramatically in the sixteen years I've been on council, from zero to substantial, but that's not part of that. So do we need to really go back and look at sort of the funding formula, given that the way people are using the library is changing, and that traditional circulation may not, in the future, be the best measure of how people are using it? So, and I don't know what the answer is to that, but I think it might be worth taking a look at sort of how are we actually allocating sort of use of the library?
And I certainly agree with you, and I get more concerned with every passing year that the funding formula may not be the right formula, and that there might be something that we could incorporate into it that would be more fully reflective of the way the Williamsburg Regional Library is used, because it's not just about circulation of library materials. We know that the Stryker Center is here because it's also used as a community living room, a place for people to come together and gather and do their work. Unfortunately, the right set of supplemental measures has not presented itself yet, and so I pay very close attention, both here and then in my professional life, keeping an eye on what... both here and then in my professional life, keeping an eye on what are other libraries doing to try to measure this.
We're not the only ones facing this issue.
No, we are not.
Well, I wish you luck as you go forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Yes, sir.
Genevieve, thank you very much for being here, and thank you for running such a great asset for the community. And again, we are 100% behind everything you do, so thank you.
Well, thank you for your terrific support.
Our next report is the request of the Triangle Arts and Cultural League Incorporated for Tourism Promotion Contingency Fund, funding for the Arts and Garden Event. We had a substantive discussion of this on Monday's work session. Collins?
For the public's benefit, I'll briefly go through the application request. It is a request to Triangle Arts and Culture League Incorporated for Tourism Promotion Contingency Funding for an Art and Garden Event to occur in approximately March 2017. The request is for $25,000 from the Tourism Promotion Contingency Fund. The application was submitted, consistent with the policy established by council, to the city manager's office. Staff did review the request. The request was received from this newly-established nonprofit organization from Terry Buntrock, the founder and executive director, and Greg Lilly, the president of the Board of Directors. The purpose of the event is to establish a fundraiser to support local public art programs. The $25,000 request is reported as a one-time funding to support the development of the event. They have sustainable funding built into their projected revenues, so they won't need to come back to the city for funding in the future. As far as consistency with the policy, it is a new project for the city, so it would be adding to. It's based on a past successful pilot program with the Garden Club of Virginia. The project will drive overnight visitation, as evidenced in the past pilot program, and proposed intent to sell premium tickets for a multi-day event. There is a return on investment, as previously reported, that includes retaining $50,000 to be used for startup seed money for next year's event. They are willing to share marketing attendance and return on investment data with the city at the conclusion. The city will be listed as a sponsor for the project. Past funding over the past five years, the pilot event received $500 contribution from the Economic Development Agency in support of that event, but nothing directly from the city budget. And they did provide a marketing plan. Primary beneficial use of the city funds would be the development of a website and marketing, social media outreach, and promotion of the website. And comparative websites and programs were provided in the application. I do notice that the applicant is here. If you have any additional questions, consistent with the policy, the application was presented at the work session on Monday, and is back before council for decision this afternoon.
Thank you, Marvin. And Terry, thank you for being here as well. I'll turn to council for any questions, comments?
Just a couple of comments, at the risk of repeating what I said on Monday. There's a lot to like about this proposal. Not only is it an intention to establish an event whose end result will be to drive overnight visitation to Williamsburg and the surrounding area, which, as we all know, is a stated goal of council's. That's similar to what we've done with the Fall Harvest Celebration, Winter Blues Jazz Fest, Festival Williamsburg, First Night, those sorts of investments and community efforts. But this one's a little bit different, in that it's building a sustaining funding model to keep the event going in future years. And based upon the results from the pilot and the projections for what the organizers anticipate, they will also be able to spin off enough revenue to support other arts events within the community. I just think that's a tremendous leveraging of public money as a public investment, along with private philanthropy, and the dedication of volunteers who want to help make not only the community more rich and dynamic, but also contribute to the tourism aspect of what we do. So I think there's a lot to like about it, and I'm in favor of it.
I completely agree with Paul. This is why we started this contingency fund. Also, seeing we've had some success with several of the things we've funded, we need to continue to think about a sustainable funding model to refill the contingency fund.
I echo that. And, you know, one of the, somebody had raised a concern about this being a new entity. And it is a new entity, but I think we have proven leaders associated with this, and both Ms. Buntrock and Mr. Lilly and their Board of Directors, clearly made up of folks that have been in the community and participated in tourism and arts and sculptures, and really have the pulse on what it is that they're trying to accomplish. And so with that, I'm comfortable and look forward to their success.
I agree with everybody. And I think, just one, it is also worth noting that there are no guarantees in this world.
No, certainly.
So there is still a little bit of a risk.
Contingencies are, I mean, it really is. This is a pool of funds that I think council was very wise to put together, put out there. I think we've, over the years that we've had it, we're beginning to iterate towards something that I think really works as a mechanism to essentially do exactly what these people are proposing to do. So, it's good. I'm hearing a lot of support, so I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that the city council approve the request of the Triangle Arts and Culture League for $25,000 in funding from the Tourism Promotion Contingency Fund to market the new Art and Garden Event, consistent with the application submitted on March 10, 2016, at the city council meeting.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Jerry, call the roll, please.
Ms. Knudsen?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Friling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Thank you. Terry, we wish you the best. Next report is the Emergency Operation Plan Adoption. This is Proposed Resolution 16-03. Mr. Collins?
All right. I'm going to quickly hand this off to the fire chief to handle. Generally, the Virginia Code requires jurisdictions to update their emergency operation plan every four years. The fire chief is going to tell you about the proposed plan that the consultant worked with the city and the fire department to prepare.
Chief Dent, welcome.
Thank you.
And thank you for all the work that went into this.
I appreciate it. Mayor Holman, members of city council, before you today for your consideration is the 2016 update to the city's emergency operations plan. The purpose of this plan is to establish the policies and procedures and organizational structure for response to emergencies or planned events. That's one thing that we changed this year in our EOP, was that in the past, it dealt specifically with emergency incidents, but there are, if we have significant planned events, it could cause us to activate a portion of our emergency operations plan. It also incorporates operating procedures for handling events that could impact the city and disrupt operations in the city, things such as hazardous materials incidents, major fires, other emergencies, storms, and also, as I mentioned, those planned events. With the implementation of these response policies and procedures, we can minimize the impact that these events have on city operations and on the public. In addition to the basic plan that was included with your agenda packet, there's three standalone documents. The Local Emergency Planning Committee document, which deals with hazardous materials, our Radiological Emergency Response Plan, which deals with our nuclear and radiological emergencies, which we utilize that portion of the plan at least every other year when we participate in the SUREI VOPEX exercise, and also the Hazard Mitigation Document. The Local Emergency Planning Committee document and the Radiological Preparedness Plan are part of this approval process. The Hazard Mitigation Plan is a standalone document that's on a different update cycle. It's on a five-year update cycle. We've currently been working about a year and a half on that document, so I intend to bring that before council later this year for your consideration on that document. In addition to those standalone documents, there are 10 hazard-specific annexes that are part of the Emergency Operations Plan. Because they contain specific operational information and sensitive information, they've been redacted from the public portion of the Emergency Operations Plan. And as Mr. Collins mentioned, the code of Virginia requires us to update this plan every four years so that it remains current. One of the new requirements this year for this update from FEMA was that we submit this plan to the Virginia Department of Emergency Management for their review and comment by their subject matter experts. That plan, I submitted the plan to VDM approximately a year ago. They provided a very small number of comments and suggestions, which is reflective of, if you recall, in 2012, we went through a major format change. So we're on track with what everyone else in the Commonwealth is doing, and so they had very few comments to provide for us for this update. As you saw in your cover memo, there are several things that, there were no major changes to this update. We did make sure that we're compliant with all federal and state regulations. We added some demographic and geographic information representative of the city. Again, indicated we add those, added those planned events as well as emergency events. One thing throughout all of the documents, we did add the Everbridge system as one of our communication links for notifying the citizens. We didn't have that in place in 2012, so that's been added throughout the document. Also, we added a line of succession and increased the depth in our EOC structure, and we also assigned some specific responsibilities for organizational structure. There were numerous revisions to acronyms, as you can imagine, and definitions, so all of that was updated in the plan. As far as the annexes go, the major revision came to our Mass Care and Sheltering Plan, which we've been working on for about a year, and that clearly identifies roles and responsibilities for operating our emergency shelter. That's been, there's been a lot of involvement from numerous departments within the city to bring this plan together. And actually, next week, we have a functional exercise to test that portion of the plan. During the four-year renewal period, we constantly look at the plan and review it. If there are updates, we track those changes, and we'll have them implemented into the next major revision. If they're minor updates, it's at the discretion of the Director of Emergency Management, Mr. Collins, or his designee to make those changes, those minor changes, without bringing it back before council. Once the plan is distributed, we have, implementation will include training exercises to include our internal and external stakeholders. And as I mentioned, we have one scheduled for next week, but we also have another exercise already on our schedule to start exercising different portions of the plan. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great. Thank you, Chief. Comments, questions?
Chief, could you talk a little bit about, each jurisdiction must adopt its own plan. So the city of Williamsburg would have a plan, James City County would have a plan, and York County would have a plan. Talk just briefly about how those plans are developed in coordination or cooperation with each other.
And all of the plans fall on different cycles for their four-year update, but we're in constant communication with the other emergency managers for specific annexes that we're going to have, we could experience the common problems, emergencies throughout. We try to mirror our plans. We do talk in our plan about, you know, mutual aid and who our partners are, responding agencies for particular incidents. Obviously, some of those jurisdictions deal with some hazards that don't necessarily impact Williamsburg as much, such as flooding. York County obviously has certain sections that they, you know, they have a significant portion of their plan that addresses flooding issues. So we do work in concert, and more importantly, if we have events that, something that's impacting all three localities, we do communicate our responses and coordinate our responses to those events.
And I think something that gets overlooked, not by chief or any of the staff, but maybe sometimes by the public, is the benefit of living in this area. We have this inter-jurisdictional cooperation, but we also have the ability to, at times if necessary, rely on the resources of other organizations, military installations. I mean, there's a lot of equipment, a lot of personnel in this area, whether it's police, fire, EMS, that can all help out. Because if it's a problem in York County, and it's big enough, it's our problem, too. It's James City County's problem, and we all have to pitch in. So, thank you.
That's also a function of the state oversight and review to make sure across the state the jurisdictions are meeting a certain level, and the national incident management, DMS, that we participate in, so that it coordinates with the federal agencies and state to state. On a larger event like a hurricane, you need to be able to bring resources from other states, and people be able to speak the same language within an incident command system to operate, and that's part of this update.
No questions. Thank you.
Just compliments. Appreciate the professional effort that goes into making sure that all this is done. So, thank you.
Thank you. This doesn't have particularly to do with this plan, but it seems to me like it was yesterday when we built a new operation, Emergency Operations Center, but it was. Where does that stand in terms of updates and sort of capital needs and what have you? I haven't really paid attention to that. So, but could you give us some sense of where you think that is? Because when it was built, it was state-of-the-art.
And it still is. It still is state-of-the-art, and I mean, we're the envy of a lot of localities to have an emergency operations center as nice as we do, and the functionality. And actually, over the last year, I guess, I've been working with IT Mark Barham to update some of the computer equipment. We had, we actually purchased laptops for the command and control side of the emergency operations center. Obviously, since 2009, those laptops are out of date, so we're in the process of replacing those laptops with more, actually, more functional for the EOC. But during activations, whether partial activations, full activation, or exercises, the layout and design of the facility is still, exceeds our needs. We do very well. It's a really nice facility, and again, we are, there's a lot of jurisdictions around the Commonwealth that would like to have an EOC that nice.
Thank you for that update. Any other questions, comments? If not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the council adopt Williamsburg's emergency operations plan as presented.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Jerry, call the roll, please.
Ms. Knudsen?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Friling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
City attorney reports, we have-
Nothing today.
An unfinished business, I believe, we have done. Any new business? Not that brings us to open forum, a time when anyone who wishes to address council on any issue may do so. You wish to address council, please come forward and state your name and address. I do have one speaker's card, Mr. Gary Shelley.
Thank you very much. I am Gary Shelley, and I live at 205 Indian Springs Road. I'd like to say first how exciting it is to be in this building, and this room in particular, and I must say, it exceeds my expectations. It's wonderful to be here, to be able to speak openly, freely about any topic that I choose. And Mayor, this may be the last time that I speak before you, by the way. I've spoken before you many times in the past. And I wish to choose the topic today, a topic which I've spoken about previously on many occasions, and of which, over many years, I have received no response. And this is about the decision of the council to loan the WRHA funds for the purchase of 110 Harrison Avenue, and specifically, your omission of informing the public of an existing contract on that property. One would hope that in a setting such as this, it would inspire all who enter this room to honor the ideals that have made our system of governance the greatest that the world has ever known. I read in the Gazette last week that you, Mayor, praised this building for, and I quote you, "Providing a site for the transparent functioning of government." End quote. But this room in itself cannot guarantee transparent functioning of government. But this room in itself cannot guarantee transparent functioning of government. That responsibility is in the hands of our elected council members and our city employees, who must always be honest and responsive to their constituents. Much attention is being paid these days to the presidential primary races, and sometimes it gets very, very ugly. We hear the candidates say to one another, "You're a liar. No, you're a liar. No, you're a liar." And some find this discourse entertaining. I find it disappointing and disheartening. But sometimes, public officials are dishonest, and when they are, they need to be called out. I wish to quote Kathleen Parker. She's a noted Pulitzer Prize-winning opinion writer, and she has written. Among the many rules that I grew up with, two stand out. First was never to call someone a liar, which was considered the worst character indictment that one could issue. The accuser had best be prepared to fight or be fleet afoot. The other was a dictum so oft repeated that is permanently tattooed in my brain. If you lie by omission, you lie by commission. Mayor, you were the council liaison to the housing authority. You had knowledge of your friend's existing contract on that property, yet you omitted letting the public know about it, that essential and relevant fact. This was not an accidental oversight on your part. The inevitable catastrophic loss, shouldered by an angry and unsuspecting public instead of your friend. You have had numerous opportunities to respond, yet you have chosen to remain silent. I've tried to make it easy for you to respond. I've stood at this podium and said that we all make mistakes, that we must acknowledge them, deal with them, and move on, but this has not been enough to get you to respond. In June of last year, I told you that I would look you in the eye and apologize to you publicly if I was proved to be an error, which, of course, I was not. Mayor, I share your praise that this building provides a site for the transparent functioning of government. Although the building itself may provide such a venue, the hope and promise of transparent government can only be delivered by honest and responsive leaders. Perhaps that hope and promise can begin today. Thank you.
Thank you for your fantasy world. Any other, anybody else wish to address council on any matter? Not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Call the roll, please, Jerry.
Ms. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.